I'm going to have to extend this presentation.
That's okay.
Is that all right?
Yeah.
You've got to know if we've got the ready, by the way. Yeah, I just...
Are we good? Can I go call the meeting order, please? Kim, notice.
There is township committee meeting, February 15th, 2018. Adequate notice of this meeting was given in accordance with the Maryland Public Meeting Act by now and careful the township committee to be at the front lines of North Star Ledger newspaper, posting a copy on the township bulletin board and filing a copy with the township clerk.
Rocco.
Perron.
Here.
Dean.
Here.
Spencer is asking for it from him. Marqueta?
Here.
Martin.
Here. This stands for the flag's word.
Flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. First thing we have is where's the police unit? Is he supposed to be here with his presentation? Kim, is Rich supposed to be here?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Daniel was not when I was down there.
Okay, well then, you know what, we'll go on.
Full woman, everybody.
Okay, then we'll jump that. Let's look for a motion to open public comment, uh, right now.
I'll make the motion, open public comment.
A second. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone wishing to come up to the podium, make your comment, please come on up. State your name, address, and then your comments.
Good evening. My name is Walter Matcuk. I live in Greenwich Township and, uh, I would like to ask a question to see the status of a, uh, item that I brought up four months ago. Uh, is there any progress on the township looking into going into solar for the municipal building or the water treatment plant, the water pump?
Is that all you got?
That's all I got.
Okay.
Was it, well, I'll just make the comment.
Okay.
It's, we've already spent about $11,000 since the last time I was here.
Okay.
Thanks.
The committee man who handles that's not here, so when he gets here, we'll have him address that, okay?
Okay, is there any other committee man that's on that? Because I was supposed to be contacted and no one is on.
The other committee man that was on it is no longer on the board, so...
Okay.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Is he expected here tonight?
The other, the old former committee?
Uh...
Yeah, he's on the way, he just...
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? I think this gentleman up here had his hand raised. Then after him, you can come up.
Ladies first.
Ladies first, okay.
Hi.
How you doing?
I'm at 328 Van Strade Street, 22th Street.
Public service.
Gonzalez.
Gonzalez?
Yes. My concern is with the safety of our students in this school system. Because of the situation that happened yesterday, I'm a bus driver, and it scares me. What are we doing for the safety, um, for these kids? Because students were, we had a gun in there, you know, da-da-bla. And now, I have a daughter that's at the Philbrook High School. I know that the district, how they have to pull in and then go up, and what are we doing for our students? Protect them from this situation? Like, what are we doing for them?
Is that all you have there?
Huh?
We don't answer questions right away, so is that all you're gonna have?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks. You can go sit down anywhere. After we go out of this, I'll, you know, I'll answer you, okay?
Very good.
The answer verbatim is going to be pretty simple. You need to address that question to the Board of Education, they handle the security of the school. The police department, I know, works hand in hand with the school district in providing security for them, but...
I was thinking about maybe putting, like, maybe, you know, um, metal detectors in the school district?
That's all up to the Board of Education, that's not up to us.
Not up to you guys?
No.
I like that idea, though.
Appreciate that.
Okay?
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
You're welcome.
You serve.
Good evening. My name is Terry Seeger. Um, I lived in the, uh, township for half my life, except for three years in service when I was a town compere. Um, my wife and I, uh, live at 211 Ridge Lane Hill Grove, and we have, uh, moved there in nineteen, we built our house in 1981. And we built the house specifically because there were deep restrictions on the law, uh, maintaining certain, uh, levels of, of, uh, maintenance on the lawns and the trees, et cetera. And, uh, over the years, uh, we've had, we've had some very good neighbors, and, uh, we've all gotten along and we've all taken care of our properties. Um, and, uh, some time ago, we received new neighbors, and, uh, we can't choose your neighbors, because, uh, we can't choose your relatives, obviously. Um, but, um, since then, uh, we have a situation that has arisen where the folks alongside of me have, have not taken care of their property. And, uh, over the, over the years, I've asked the person to do certain things, uh, trim his trees, uh, trim the shrubs, um, take care of the weeds, and this, I'm, I'm talking specifically alongside of the houses. Everybody in the, uh, neighborhood does take care of the lawns and does take care of their, their property. Um, this fellow does not have the ambition nor the energy to do that. So I've asked him on a number of occasions, uh, if he would please clean up this property, and I get vulgar language in fact. And, uh, so, uh, and while this is going on, the property, the trees on the property have continued to grow over towards my, my power line. So this fall, I got very frustrated. Uh, it's a lot of community frustration. And I came down to the township, um, and I asked Kim, explained the situation to her about the property, and I asked her if she could, if there's something she could do, write a letter, um, relative to his own laws. And, uh, she said absolutely she would, she would write the, uh, the written, the letter. Um, the letter was written, um, I did not get a copy of that, and I had, I had asked Paul if I could get a copy of that, and I never did get a copy of it. Um, so, the letter went out, didn't hear anything. I was about ready to go out on my, uh, my walk, my daily walk, and, uh, I happened to see some folks over in a police office.
Terry, we usually live to three minutes, so if we get to what you're really wanting to ask.
Well, really, really, where I'm at is, I'm really frustrated, and...
Yeah, I, I've heard, I know what's, I know what's going on, too, but I think most of us do, so...
Yeah, so, so my point is, um, you can't destroy my property and say, it's your responsibility to do certain things. You can't have your shrubs growing over on my power line and allowing, you know, and, and threatening my well-being and say that, well, we can get there's essential power in life. I talked to them, and they said to me, we can't do anything about it. And Paul knows the story. I, I don't know whether he ever got a call back from...
No, nobody's ever responded.
Well, I got a call in to him, and, uh, John Keller came out to me, and, who is the advanced, uh, forester, and he explained to me, he said, Terry, he said, because of the new laws, um, with sale of power and whatnot, there's essential power in life, it's no longer, they're the provider, but they're no longer responsible from the pole to your house. And, um, so, see, I can't help, so I'll send you the law. And I have, I, I said I didn't need it, because I thought I could get this thing resolved, and I didn't. Uh, so, so my point is, um, I thought I was dealing with, uh, Paul had indicated, because I asked him, I said, what is your capacity here? And he says, on the liaison between, uh, the, uh, zoning officer and whatnot. Time goes by, uh, I'm not getting any action, getting any resolve on this thing, and I gotta tell you, I'm thinking, and like my wife said, something's going on here, Terry. And so, uh, and I indicated that to Paul. At that point, Paul said he's starting it over to, to the zoning officer, and I said, well, wait a minute. Why wasn't I dealing with the zoning officer at the beginning? Uh, they should know the laws. Um, I didn't get any satisfaction.
Let's get to the point, okay?
My point is that nothing's been done, other than, I will say this much, that two trees were removed that were hanging over my house, like, would have fallen, they were dead.
Mm-hmm.
But the major problem is, I got water runoff. I called the engineer, still waiting for a call back from the engineer, uh, I don't know what the problem was. Um, but, uh, it was like, I, I'm calling people, and it's like, wait a minute, I'm a taxpayer here. So my point is, the problem isn't resolved. I got an erosion problem, and it's a cause and effect. Uh, I have nothing, I've got letters here that indicate that, um, with no, no ordinance numbers or anything. I went to my attorney, we looked up in six minutes, we looked up in ordinance, and I couldn't get any of that from these folks. So, I'm frustrated, and I want to get a resolve. Uh, I got a $350,000, $400,000 home, uh, that we built, and I got a house alongside of it, quite frankly, looks like a big tent. I got six boats, uh, two trailers, uh, without licenses.
Do you have that? Do you have any answers for any of this? Do you have any updates?
Uh, I do.
Maybe we save them a lot of time.
No, we've, we've involved Mike Labor and everything. Right now, he, his original complaints were in property maintenance, not zoning, but it has morphed to zoning, which is why I have then referred it to Larry, um, because he's a zoning official. Originally, it was all property maintenance issues. We've resolved some things. Uh, I spoke with Mike Finelli about the water runoff, uh, there seems to be no problem with it.
We're in the race.
Well...
You can't destroy my law.
Well, again, yeah, but then we'll get into...
Right.
You're gonna litigate with the neighbor, and we can't handle that for you, Terry.
This is a, a long, long explanation that we should continue and do business. If Terry wants to stay till the end of the meeting, Mike and myself, and although Mike Labor's not here, we can have a follow-up conversation as to what's been done, what we're obligated to do, and things of that nature. But this, we can have this conversation for thirty, forty minutes.
Or you can have, or do it another night when Larry's available.
Uh, exactly, that too.
Why don't we do that? You want to arrange a meeting with the zoning officer, him? Mike?
That's fine. The only thing, and I'll leave you with this, the only problem, the only thing I'd like to say is, you remediated the one problem, but the most, the most, uh, dangerous problem hasn't been remediated, and that's what I don't understand. And I just, I just need some kind of, I need a guy to get along with, I think you know that.
Yeah, I know, yeah, yeah.
And it's, it's just, it's a ruckus.
Yeah.
And I, I'm a person, I need get answers, so I tell them.
Well, and why don't we do that? You're gonna wait tonight and talk?
Why don't we, why don't we set up a meeting? I think that's great. I'd love to sit down and have your zoning officer there, love to talk to him.
Okay.
Love to meet him.
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, thanks, Terry.
And thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Yeah.
It's an honor, sir.
Anyone else? Mike, did you have any explanations for any of that? Oh, let me quickly, let's make a motion to close public comment. I'm gonna make the motion. Let me make a motion close. A second, all in favor?
Aye.
Mike, did you have any explanations on that, or any answers, or not, or...
Quickly.
I, I would prefer...
The meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, never mind. That way I can walk on.
Yeah, because that's not really what we...
I want to be fair.
Okay, thanks, thanks, Terry. Okay. Chief, are you ready to go?
Well, before, just to respond to the one...
Oh, okay.
The one question about the school safety?
Yes.
Because I was thinking the same thing. In fact, well back when I was mayor in 2004, we had implemented the police following the, uh, school buses. I don't know if the, if, you guys still do that, right?
They still follow us.
That's great, because that started back in 2004. But, um, I was thinking the same thing, because I've gone to the schools and didn't look, to me, it didn't look adequate either. Just one second. Brad, you're the liaison at the school. I was wondering maybe if you could bring it up and talk to the superintendent to see if they're looking into it.
Yeah, next meeting, and I know we have a school board member in the audience, too, but we can certainly discuss it, but I know, you know, from the years I've been on the school board, there's a whole safety and action plan that has been established by the school district in coordination with local law enforcement, with the sheriff's office. So they have, in a county, they have, there is a safety action plan in place. Uh, so if there's any concern, you know, coming from, uh, the incidents that happened yesterday, the unfortunate sad incidents that happened yesterday, um, I'm sure it's being discussed, no doubt. In fact, I think there was police at the schools today. Um, so, I can certainly bring it up, whether or not that, that changes how they, uh, approach their safety plan.
Have they looked for metal detectors?
I, I don't know if they have, I don't know if that's an appropriate thing for our schools. Um, you know, these are elementary schools.
Well, we did have a, there was a, an issue with the, uh, plan at the school, so...
But, yeah, I can bring it up, it's something that, uh...
Well, we closed public comment, man, so... You're welcome to talk to the chief of the police department anytime, except for right now, because you're doing a presentation. Ready, Rich?
I'm ready.
Okay.
Um, thank you for having me here. Um, my name's Mary Jo Perry, I'm from the Family Guidance Center here in Warren County. Um, the Family Guidance Center is a mental health substance abuse, um, prevent, uh, prevention, treatment, and recovery, uh, service provider for mental health, substance abuse, and substance assault. And, um, the work that I do, I do it in prevention, and we do everything from prevention education to going over, changing policies and things. Um, and we cover all, um, all aspects of substance abuse, from tobacco, underage drinking, all the way to heroin, everything in between. Um, and I don't have to tell you that, you know, addiction does not discriminate. Um, we in Warren County are not immune from what's going on. Um, we have a huge heroin, opiate epidemic in our country, but it has affected Warren County in the last, I'd never go over exceeding the last 25 years I've been doing this work. Um, and if it hadn't been for the introduction of, um, naloxone, which is Narcan, um, we would have had last year alone of the 137 deaths, because just now in Warren County, we probably would have had 137 deaths, on top of the 35 that we always did have, uh, for overdose deaths. So you're looking at well over, you can, you can have 200 deaths a year. Now, that doesn't seem like a lot when compared to the, the, uh, southern counties and things like that, to Warren County per capita. We are no different than the Cape May County and, like, Ocean County. We're losing our young people, we're, we're losing our adults, uh, it's getting younger and younger. Um, Helen Carey is a parent that we work with, and she lost her son to a heroin overdose about four years ago. In fact, this, uh, February is his birthday, and March is when he overdosed. And when that happened, um, there was no Narcan. And she truly believes that had there been Narcan, it wouldn't be here today. Um, his dad was a police officer, she was one of those involved moms. She was not a helicopter mom, but she was one of those moms that was always involved in everything, so don't ever think that it can't happen to you, because it can and it will happen. Um, so what Helen wanted to do, and she, she really would draw this to the forefront of how important it is that our law enforcement, that our EMC, that we make sure that they always have Narcan. I know that in some, like, it's not a line item, so towns sometimes are looking like, okay, well, we try and run out of this, uh, because it is saving lives. Um, again, last year in 2018, we had 35 overdose deaths. Uh, the previous year was about 32. We're averaging about three people a month. We're losing three people a month in Warren County due to it. Um, so, with the Narcan deployment, what Helen wanted to do is, she wanted to personally thank every single law enforcement, EMC in Warren County for deploying Narcan as part of their job, but knowing that they really care beyond that, that's not just part of their job. They are saving that person's life, they are saving that family's own party. Um, so, uh, for the last three years, we hold a, um, a public recognition for all EMC, like, for all law enforcement, and we publicly thank them, um, inviting their town, the community, and local charities. And, um, I'm sorry that Helen couldn't be here, um, tonight, but we wanted to honor , um, law enforcement, know that you guys have done that, um, before, so we wanted to say a special thank you. We work, side by side with law enforcement, and try to get them what they need, find it, community what you need, um, trying to get you involved in knowing that whether you understand addiction or not, families are, we're losing people every single day. Um, and if it hadn't been for the Narcan deployments, last year alone, 137 would have been added to the 35 deaths in that way. So I want to here publicly say, because these families did not come to our, our recognition of having December, we wanted to come to you, we wanted all of you to know what your law enforcement has done, we wanted all of you to know what you probably want to do, um, help thank the people that you have Narcan, and I hope that's something we'll always support and encourage. So, um, with that being said, I also want to leave you with the 911 cards. Um, that means that if you, if there's somebody who is, um, overdosed, uh, if there's someone with them, they can call 911, stay with that victim, and they won't be, um, criminally charged if they stay there, regardless of the drug, criminal, they can have an absentee warrant, but the, the idea of it is if somebody overdoses, call 911 and get them help. And then the purple card is for anybody that you know that is ready for treatment, or even should be in treatment, or some type of recovery program, these are all the, um, agency service providers, if they can call 24/7, is how you get somebody's health, so I want to leave that to the community. But with that being said, so, thank you, Thomas. Thank you very much, I appreciate it. Um, Sean Gerard, skeleton. Uh, Patrolman Ryan, Rockford.
Got it.
And then we'd also like for your emergency services responder to come up also, and accept us on behalf of the, um, primary emergency services.
I just want to say thank you to the coalition, because, uh, without them, uh, all the police departments in Warren County would have, uh, had a great cause of Narcan. They donated over a thousand dollars to our chief association, which, uh, we have bought several kits and several doses for, uh, more active departments, uh, not incurring any cost to the township, so thank you, Ben.
And anybody can donate for that, or they can donate money through, um, and they can buy Narcan for all law enforcement personnel here, so, um, I don't think anyone has any questions or comments.
No, thank you, thank you for all you do, too, with the, uh, this epidemic, so...
Thank you.
Chief, you want to, you want to get together, take a quick picture, on that side? And on a side note, while they're doing this, uh, the rescue squad, in conjunction with St. Luke's Warren, are, uh, resupplying at no cost to the police department when they use Narcan.
Yes, thank you for mentioning that.
You want a room to catch it? Thanks again, guys.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Proud of you, congratulations. Will, you have the blind side, but while you're right here, Mr. Malcuk had a question about what's the progress of our research on, uh, solar?
Uh, Joe and I are gonna meet, we, uh, got some business cards, we're also gonna get his, uh, phone number, and we're gonna set up, uh, a time to, uh, do it with that business card I got the other day, um, with the state funding that the other townships have been doing, uh, we're researching it at this time to, uh, put it together. And then we also started with, um, net electrical, with, uh, going through the municipal building and changing the outlets to those motion lights.
Mm-hmm.
So when somebody's not in the room, the light turns off, and then we just gotta move to get it, so, that's the progress we're doing. When it comes to solar, like I said, we're, we're starting the process of, uh, of the research, and we're gonna set up a meeting with everybody, probably within the next week or two is when we're gonna, uh, start everything.
I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. Probably about another week or two is, uh, when we're gonna start, we're, we're getting the information together, and then, uh, we're gonna contact you, and we're gonna, um, sit down, just come in and give a, get a quick presentation as to what we're doing. There's a state grant that, uh, a couple of the other municipalities have, uh, obtained, Harmony and Alpha, and I think PoHAT, so we're also researching how we can get the money to partially fund the, uh, the solar program, along with the, uh, electric savings program.
Okay, well, the important part that you may not be aware of is, there are programs in place right now that you don't have to buy them.
Right, and it's the, the one program that the other...
The grant.
The other towns that, uh, have participated in this program was the same thing. They came in and it was basically self-funded, where they were given the money from the state to, uh, do the solar programs, and also go through and, and do the furnaces, and, uh, you know, heating and electric and, and all that. So, that's why we're, we're just getting some information, but we are gonna contact you, uh, probably in a week or so, to set up a meeting and, and get the, the program rolling. Now that the, the garage is done, that gives us a whole nother facility where we could put more panels on and do that, so, um, that's the reason why we, we are going through changing all the outlets right now to motion lights, except for main safety corridors. So all office lights within another, you know, two or three weeks are gonna have the motion lights to turn the light off when it's not on, because this is the most light that's on all the time. So, about, about a week or so is, uh, when we're gonna get everything organized. We're gonna try to do it before the, uh, the next, uh, committee meeting marks, so we can get the ball rolling.
You're also looking at, at the water pump.
You know, you could talk about that, you can just have your meeting, okay? Thanks.
That, that's the major one that we're, we're doing, so...
Looking for a motion for payment of bills.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second. Any questions, comments, or discussions? Yeah, before we do it, um, Mike, um... Chapman's bills. What are we doing with them? I mean, apparently they're billing us at a new rate?
Well, there's, I've had some limited involvement in the KPO Kathleen and with Brent.
Okay.
Um, and we had some discussions, they had a conference call, I don't know if you liked them, but, yeah. So, and I don't typically see the bills, I've seen copies of some stuff that Dave emailed, you know, Patty Hines.
Right.
Exactly. So, I, I don't know, to be honest with you, what were billed and don't. I would, I, I mean...
My confusion is, and this, I, my confusion is, did we sign a contract, and now we're getting billed additional charges not as per the contract and sign? That's where I'm totally lost.
Well, there, there are legitimate additional charges that they can incur, like, you know, emergency services.
Right, well, I, I think, I think it's an hourly thing. I mean, they've got some emergency services bills, I do believe that they should be paid, but there seems to be a question at the rate. Now, my conversation with Patty Hines from Chapman a long time ago was, they didn't think they had a contract. It didn't get delivered to them until nine months after the contract became effective. And they wanted to renegotiate emergency service numbers.
I think it was a couple of months ago.
Yeah, it did, exactly, right. And that's why I'm asking, because I thought it was going to be solved.
I thought you addressed that one a little earlier.
And we have copies from the mayor's side, and they were sent to them, so...
Okay, first of all...
But now they're billing additionally, not as per that contract, at least that's what I'm gathering.
That's, yes. That, that's what I'm gathering as well, which caused the confusion, for lack of a better term. No, the contract, the contract, and I think there was a little, maybe, confusion between our office and Kim, because obviously the con, we got the contract signed by, by Chapman. It, it was sent here for the mayor and for Kim to execute it. Uh, I think Kim thought, because a lot of times it worked this way, that I was gonna send the contract to, to Chapman, yeah, to Chapman. Well, I didn't have the ex, that contract, because it was here, because obviously, the mayor and Kim had to sign it. So, that just was a, uh, point of confusion, if you will, between, between, I'll say, between Kim and I, uh, until it got brought up by Chapman, like, when they said, where's the contract? And then, I coordinated with Kim, I said, it's here, and she sent it. And it, well, hasn't been nine months, but whatever, it was a number.
It was a number of months.
Absolutely. Nine months.
So, with, with, well, with that being said, though, they were on board with the original contract?
Absolutely.
Because I'm, I'm getting a general impression that they weren't.
We awarded the contract to them that night, which was the May, I believe, the May 2017 meeting. I sent a letter to them notifying them that they bought, the, the award was made and that the contracts would be forthcoming. And, and that's kind of, you know, I really haven't had much involvement after.
So, with that being said, Kathleen, can you re-itemize their bill to the contract numbers? And then we can have a conversation with them?
So, basically.
What our contract says is what they should be getting paid.
I will go back to Patty, because she emails me. I want to go back to her and say, "You need to give me new updated bills as per the contract." And I guess I'll see what happens.
Right, and see what hap, I mean, they, they've come out and done a lot of work, you know, so they should be paid. And this work was done back in July. You know, I mean, so, you know, here we are, uh, you know, so it needs to be addressed. If she can get that done quickly, let's get this done for them. Because they're certainly entitled to some money, but if there's a contract issue here, then.
And we did end the motions to be, um, to pay them as per the contractual rate.
And I, I'm good with that, i- i- yeah, so, all right. So, if we can separate that one, just to pay them as, as the contractual rate.
Okay. Any other questions, comments?
No, go ahead. Um, on Larry's bill, what was the key in the group?
Well, that was a phone call he made to a company, uh, asking about services.
Okay. I don't know what it was in reference to or anything. I just saw it on there or something.
Yeah.
Okay. I had a few questions, but I talked to Kathleen, she cleared up. There was just one other one, I just want to make sure I'm clear on it because I'm going to use my excuse of being a new member to ask them a question. So, um, Service Electric provides the phones here, is that right? Or, what I'm confused on is I see Verizon with this, the main number on here and Service Electric, so who's providing?
One number for speed 590909, I think, is Verizon bill.
Yeah, there's two, there's an 454, 1010, so we don't, police department, non-emergent, so they don't go through Verizon, uh, Service Electric then, so.
The main number, 0909 is on the Verizon bill? That could be, the, the 0909 could be the number that's established for the building with the Verizon, is it the Verizon Wireless?
No, that's a separate one, that's the cell.
Yeah, it's an actual bill.
There's two landlines, there's a 1010 and a 0909, but if Service Electric's doing the phones, like, why are we calling Verizon, I guess is my question.
I'll have to.
Are you going for the alarms or anything?
They could be for the alarms, that's why, the fire alarm goes there. That's making, and that's not true.
Is there, like, the deregulation of the electric where somebody does something, or?
If your phone's through the internet, you shouldn't have to pay the telephone company anymore. I just, all right, just look at it.
And we'll have to work on that, you have to figure out what it is, right?
Yep, that's the only other question I have.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay. So, I guess we want to change the motion to payment of bills with the exception, pay the bills with the, let's do, let's, let's take a vote on the motion that's made. Let's vote no, we're stuck with it.
Right.
Paul?
Yes, but I think I have to abstain from.
No, you don't, I apologize.
No.
From, Bean?
No.
Spencer?
No.
Marketa?
No.
No.
Looking for a motion to pay the bills as presented, the except, the exception of the Chapman, uh, bill. Anybody want to make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second. Any questions, comments, or discussions on it now? Roll call.
Paul?
Yes, but I have to abstain from, P O eighteen dash zero two one five.
What is that?
That's the clockkeeper for my, my son who did the clockkeeper thing.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
Spencer?
Yes.
Marketa?
Yes.
Of course.
Yes. Looking for a motion to pay the Chapman bill as per the contractual rate.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Questions, comments, discussion on that? Roll call.
Paul?
Yes.
Bean?
Yes.
Spencer?
Yes.
Marketa?
Yes.
Of course.
Yes. Looking for a motion to pay the Chapman bill as per the contractual rate.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Questions, comments, discussion on that? Roll call.
Paul?
Yes.
Bean?
Yes.
Spencer?
Yes.
Marketa?
Yes.
Looking for a motion to adopt resolution twenty eighteen thirty seven, it's authorizing the pension of listed tax leads.
No, you mustn't.
I'll second it.
Questions, comments, discussion? Roll call.
Paul?
Yes.
Bean?
Yes.
Spencer?
Yes.
Marketa?
Yes.
Yes. Looking for a motion to approve the minutes of January second, twenty eighteen, and January eighteenth, twenty eighteen, unless somebody needs them split for any reason.
Well, I do have split.
Okay. Looking for a motion to adopt, approve the minutes from January two, twenty eighteen.
I'll make the motion.
You will, you second.
Second it.
Questions, comments?
I do have a comment on the January second one.
Okay.
Um, I don't know what page. It's the section with appointment of open space committee.
Mm-hmm.
You have new listed, and that should be billed. That should be billed, Kim, because we, nobody's swat.
He wasn't appointed at the reorg though.
No.
So, it would drive me just to open.
On open space, I think we did do it at the reorg, but was it the land use we did in the next way you got it?
Yes.
Yeah.
So, uh.
You and Bill switched?
Bill was not on, um, open space.
No, but we pointed him at the reorg. Yeah.
Yes.
But, Mike, Mike, but it's got my name.
Oh, okay.
You got to switch.
I'll, I'll.
Okay.
Okay, you good? You roll call then?
Paul?
Yes, as amended.
Bean?
Yes.
Spencer?
Yes.
Marketa?
Yes.
Yes. Looking for a motion to approve the minutes from January eighteen, twenty eighteen meeting.
I'll make motion.
I'll second. Any questions, comments, or discussions on those minutes? Roll call.
Paul?
Yes.
Bean?
Yes.
Spencer?
Yes.
Marketa?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Mr. Chief here right now, his first report. Well, you know what, while, while we're waiting for him, I want to make a, an appointment to the land use board of the alternate vacancy, Pam Peslis, P E S L I S. I'll give you the rest of the information tomorrow, email.
It should be number four.
Yes.
P E S L I S?
Yes. And, now, can we get to the chief? Thanks. Thanks, Lieutenant.
Yeah, got moved from the land use board last night, didn't get moved back.
What, uh, I'm sorry, I'm.
It's your monthly report.
Yeah, okay, very good. Uh, it's the monthly report, so, uh, I have received a email from, uh, minimum of our own for a couple of extra things to add on the report. And that being the vacation days used and the sick, sick days used, those are recorded in our, um, time sheets are, are quite different time sheets than we put in for payroll. So, basically, we're just taking those numbers and putting them on your monthly reports and you have those. Uh, as far as call volume, a little bit higher than previous January, yeah, seventeen, nine hundred and fifty-seven call such incidents. We had, um, everything was kind of about the same as far as numbers, you know, uh, the exception of applicant processing, a little bit higher with F thirty-one, which, uh, includes firearms for, uh, people coming down asking, fingerprinted for a, a job with their own cards and with, uh, background checks that separate agencies do, but they, we, they provide their own cards and print them for it. All right. We had a, uh, just our double, the adult arrest, uh, the twelve adult arrests and our prison aisle arrest were four as opposed to one in two thousand and seventeen, January. Uh, summonses were at, uh, one hundred and twenty-nine total and it was, uh, just about a couple of January, yeah, seventeen detective cases, it's hard to remember sixteen through three. And, uh, again, with the vacation days, uh, eight vacation days used in total and eleven sick days used in total, uh, we, unfortunately, we're suffering, uh, from the, uh, discipline going around. Uh, also included in your report should be the overtime breakdown, which will be giving you monthly and also a yard one, which breaks down what each hour of overtime went into for the, uh, for the previous month there. And, did everybody see that in the package?
Yes.
Thank you.
Uh, do you want to go to that or is it?
I find it self-explanatory.
Yeah.
Some of these guys might have it, but you're good with it?
I appreciate you having me.
Um, Detective Bureau, double the amount of cases. Any reason why, or?
Uh, well, we're just getting done with the holiday season, getting a lot of stuff, um, uh, with, um, with debts and whatnot, but, uh, nothing, uh, nothing over, be ordinary.
Okay.
Cars may have been taken.
Excuse me?
They saved now cars and stuff?
Um, of course, I'm very good, yes.
Good.
Still working on the, uh, getting all the money together for the computers, so, like I said, the, uh, we have a county grant coming in that will cover, uh, most of that cost, the money that was put aside for the capital for those computers, uh, you know, putting some of that money.
I didn't really have that other plate reader.
Um, it's not, um, going, uh, the company that, what that is, the company that puts the bricks up cars, it's the same company that puts them on YTD cars, they're authorities, so they're, they're quite busy, but they, uh, they expedite our, our last part and, uh, I just found that they're, uh, expedite once, uh, the yard equipment.
Thanks to you and thanks to you guys, chief.
Excuse me?
Yes, thanks to you and thanks to your guys.
Thank you.
Your service, Will.
And it says in, saw me the other day too, and I want to compliment you guys on your performance and the amount of times that they're seeing the patrol cars around the residential areas also, so, you know, just to give you a heads up and everything.
Thanks, I'll, uh, I'll.
Yeah, they're, they're very happy with everything.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, oh, I need, I'll make a motion to accept the police department report for, uh, January.
Second.
Any questions, comments, discussions on it? Roll call.
From, Bean?
Yes.
Spencer? Marketa?
Yes. Call, you're up.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to accept the monthly court report found in the front tab of your, uh, book.
Tab four. I'll make the motion.
Oh, you made the motion, you're second. You made the motion, right?
Oh, I'll second.
Any questions, comments, discussion on the court report? Roll call.
Paul?
Yes.
Bean?
Yes.
Spencer?
Yes.
Marketa?
Yes.
Yes.
And I'd like to also make a motion to COA, uh, for the monthly tax collector's report from Bonnie Fleming, which is found back in, I guess it's tab four.
I'll second the motion. Questions, comments, discussion on that?
Uh, quick, did you, did Bonnie supply you with the information that you wanted?
I, it.
Or is it just, it's new, okay, fair enough.
Yeah, it's something new that.
Yep, okay.
And I had a question on the one balance, but it's fine, I'm sure.
Okay.
When she's, uh, has time, she can get it.
Roll call.
Paul?
Yes.
Bean?
Yes.
Spencer?
Yes.
Marketa?
Yes.
Yes.
And I'd like to also make a motion to COA, uh, for the monthly tax collector's report from Bonnie Fleming, which is found back in, I guess it's tab four.
I'll second the motion. Questions, comments, discussion on that?
Uh, quick, did you, did Bonnie supply you with the information that you wanted?
I, it.
Or is it just, it's new, okay, fair enough.
Yeah, it's something new that.
Yep, okay.
And I had a question on the one balance, but it's fine, I'm sure.
Okay.
When she's, uh, has time, she can get it.
Roll call.
Paul?
Yes.
Bean?
Yes.
Spencer?
Yes.
Marketa?
Yes.
Paul, you done?
I'm done.
Okay, Will?
Uh, I'd like to make a motion for, uh, animal control monthly report. She had, uh, eight calls, including the owl stuck in the chimney that was.
I saw it. I saw it.
Owl stuck in the chimney.
Yeah, Taz pulled it out, right?
Yeah, Taz pulled it out, it was in the middle road. So, uh, it's good we had a little bit of a slow month with it, but, uh, she had eight total calls, so we made the motion for that.
I'll second it. Any questions, comments, or discussion?
I'll say to her, "Look, you're getting better," because she's slowly adding everything we're asking you, so, uh.
It's in there.
Anybody else? Roll call.
Paul?
Yes.
Bean?
Yes.
Spencer?
Yes.
Marketa?
Yes.
Uh, Joe, you want to do the DPW report? I'm looking at some, uh, good progress and we got the, uh, DPW garage going and.
All right, uh, according to winter months, it's the big buildings and grounds time, we're doing work, received the pepper, the strip of God, you can see for the, uh, DPW building on January thirtieth. Uh, still waiting for what's going to be next Tuesday. A door got damaged in shipping a garage door, we're going to replace that panel. And in the spring, we got to put, um, a couple pads in front of the man doors. And then, once the work's done outside, we'll get our permanency on for the building. But we're able to occupy, we started occupying it, and all the equipment is inside there right now. I would love to, that's, that's the deal. So, uh, we're working out of that, uh, building right now. Um, the gas and fuel management system, I want to get a second quote, but that's going to be a springtime thing, hopefully. I got to put some pad out by the gas pumps also. So, in conjunction with filling the pads in front of the DPW building doors, have that ready to go. And the fuel management, just to bring, for out of speed, is nothing more than cards or kebabs, and we can track fuel usage per department and help secure our gas pump rate back.
So, the kebab will, it opens up the bound, I guess.
Yeah, it's a machine that'll sit there, you swipe it, and then it activates the nozzle, the gas data, the fuel vehicle.
Nice.
Um, right now, we're looking into replacing the, like, the tanks and everything, and that's beyond our budget. This money is left over from fifteen, sixteen, two thousand and fifteen, there's a budget allotted there. So, I'm waiting for the second quote. First quote we got is at twenty-two thousand dollars. So, waiting for the second quote, we're underneath the big threshold to, and I should have them again, hopefully, next meeting, or maybe we can put it on a budget meeting when I have the quotes to approve that then to move forward.
Is that for two tanks?
What's that?
Is that two tanks?
We're not replacing two tanks. We have a diesel fuel, five hundred gallon diesel fuel, we have a five hundred gallon gasoline tank out there. The tanks were, with the, including new tanks, was over our budget for that. And so, we're trying to stay within our budget number.
And Joe, wasn't that originally that fuel management program, didn't, you tried to procure that on a grant, right? Or was that budgeted capital?
No, they always, they always had the money set aside and then passed capital from, toward that system, yeah, so.
So, what, the twenty-two, I'm sorry, Joe, what, so what, what does that cover? Is that just for the fuel management system?
That'll be new, new gas pumps, diesel fuel pumps, uh, there's, uh, metering devices That'll be new, new gas pumps, diesel fuel pumps, uh, there's, uh, metering devices on there, and there's also, what there is, is a, uh, it's a wireless and computer system, and it'll send me a report to my, uh, computer with the breakdown of per department using gallons going out, so. Uh, the next thing is, the, uh, we just finished up, the police chief's, uh, given the secretary her own little office down there, and the chief has a private office down there, just wrapping that all up, the painting and stuff, and I got called for a final inspection, and once that's done, then we gotta, uh, put the secure window in for the secretary.
Let's not make it sound like we did a big expansion here, right? We basically took one office, we made it two offices.
We're well, no, we're well under probably eight hundred dollars on this little job.
I'm just kidding, I just don't want people to think we built this big elaborate, we basically took one office, I made it two offices.
So, uh, that, I know we waited a while for it, but once we got time to do it, we gotta take a pair of. Also, part of our energy thing is, there's two new wireless, uh, thermostats on the meeting room and the offices upstairs here, so they're all controlled by a program accessible from my DPW phone, uh, it seems to be working out all right. Just an example, a couple weeks ago, we had thirteen degree day outside, still come inside here, it was still sixty degrees, so that means the heater probably ran a little bit, but that's what they're set on at night time, and stuff.
Trying to see what we can budgetary for everything, if it helps out, or, uh, what the costs are gonna be.
There is, with some of this stuff here, there is some money left over in the energy, green energy, uh, money that the town has in the account here. Like I said, when we took a motion to pester light switches and stuff like that, we're utilizing that, that money instead of it just sitting there, for, that's the purpose of it, also looking at LED lighting and stuff, or on the outside of the building, and stuff, that'll help. And then, um, let's see here. Oh, okay, the, uh, I know we're talking about Thomas Stewart Park, and I don't know what Frank's gonna bring up here, but there's things going to budget, mowing and stuff, and I don't know if the committee is gonna consider just seeing what an outside vendor would cost, what his cost would be to mow that grass. I'm working on my, my prices right now, what would cost us, who are one of our guys to do it, and plus, the other list is jobs that, mowing contractor isn't gonna do, so you have a budgetary number for when we're ready to move forward with that.
Yeah, those are gonna bring it up.
People first, probably gonna be about to do for the first mowing type.
He's, Will's gonna bring it up, he said, when you're-
What's that?
Will's gonna bring it up when you're done, I guess.
We're doing, doing, uh, exactly.
Oh, okay, okay.
And then, uh, I know we talked about it budget-wise, and I'd like the committee to consider, um, putting on a, uh, we talked about this, putting out four quotes for the electrician, a plumber, or heating and air conditioning guy with, uh, like their service rates. I think they, and I might have it wrong, RF two, RFP, I think Mike Laborry talked about it.
I think Mike's looking into the legality and how we can do it.
Yeah.
On an emergency basis, like kind of material?
Well, emerg- emergency, or even at, on an as-need basis, to add an outlet, uh, electrical light thing, stuff like that, um, we have a water pipe first, or we need some plumbing and stuff, so, I know others do it, I know the school district does it for some of that stuff, and for general repairs, just something like that, saves a lot of time, getting the quotes done now, they put it out, they've given their labor rate during regular hours, and then if it's an emergency, it's something like that, so.
You don't have any updates on that, Frank, or Mike?
No. Mike's looking at it.
Okay, that lady said, that would make my job easier, pick him up, pick up the phone, call, say, hey, we've got this issue here to take care of. Um, DPW-wise, we did the Christmas tree collection, I don't know, Bob reported that, the environmental, I think it was close to a hundred trees, it was a little light this year, uh, the birthday was two degrees.
Right, 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 it was cold.
So, um, that is done. Year-to-date, salt usage, a hundred and fifteen tons, and we've had delivered a hundred and fifty-three, we got about two forty and stuff right now out of the salt jet. Uh, try to keep that, one, use one side and then rotate it back and forth. And then the, uh, other thing, and I don't know, Will, do you want to discuss the part-time?
Thank you.
People, executive, and then come out of there? That's all I have, thank you very much.
Thanks, Joe, thanks for everything you do, we, we know we throw a lot of curveballs at you and your department, so, uh-
I used to play catcher when I was young.
Well, thanks, I can see that. Thanks for working with us, though, we appreciate it, you changed your plans for us, so. Will, have you still have it done, or you have some other?
Nah, that's, I don't know if I make a motion? Oh, make a motion to approve the, uh, DPW monthly report.
I'll second, any questions, comments, discussions on the report? Roll call.
Paul?
Yes.
Yes.
Spencer?
Yes.
Marketa?
Yes. Frank, you're up.
Okay, um, thank you, Mr. Mayor, Thomas Stewart Park, um, a bunch of things are going on, Thomas Stewart's thunder, so, I know that-
Be my guest.
Maybe finally got the, had the pump inspection, uh, go-
It passed, it, uh, Mr. Sampson excavated the pump, it was like two days ago, I believe, I think it was Tuesday. We went out and inspected it, and everything came up fine, we actually pulled the pumps out of the wet well. Joe, do you have the pumps, did the pumps get delivered here?
No, he has that, over here, he has that.
No, no, but they were supposed to come back here. Okay, that would have been just like yesterday.
Oh, okay.
Okay, fine, that's fine.
All right, so that's good, that's all signed off?
It's all good, so that, that is, that is beyond.
Right, okay, great.
Yep.
And then, um, and I saw a bunch of emails on the slab getting poured, so what's going on with that?
I got one already yesterday.
There you go.
Yep.
So that's, that's really good news, that's good progress.
I wasn't there, but I was in the email, I coordinated with Mark Skoda, he was gonna, he was gonna be out there, uh, so, and the weather was fine, and I, I happened to drive by, didn't have time to stop, unfortunately, the concrete truck was out there with the chute, so it was, it was getting done.
That's good, so first of all, that's the slab for the concession stand.
The slab for the concession stand, which was the big holdup going back to beginning, and, and then the, yeah.
Mary, that looks good.
Fantastic, when, I didn't understand, when he said they, he took the pump out, and it's here, so it took it out of the well?
Yeah.
It's not back in?
No, no, no.
I don't get what you're saying.
The pumps are just, they sit in the bottom of this panel, basically.
Right.
They're, they're, they can be secured, or they can be released, that, it, for maintenance purposes, let's say.
Okay.
So they, you pop them out, and they, they come out of the tank.
Real quick to connect on-
Yeah, so.
See, you expected it, but then you gotta put it back in, or?
No, we're talking about just the actual pumps themselves.
Right.
Which are, it's wrong, the, our concern was more the actual structure, the, that, the back fill, the stone at the base, and so on and so forth, uh, because it was all covered up, I mean, it's, uh, about a twelve-foot-deep structure, uh, so, so, no, the, the, I mean, the pumps don't need to be in there. I mean, obviously, they're far, it's far from getting connected, and it's, so.
I misunderstood, I thought it was already connected, that's why I-
No.
I was like, oh, it is, okay.
And then we got the county road improvements, I saw you talking to, uh,
Yep.
The contractor about starting that up.
Yeah, it's clear that, excuse me, Frank, but it's, it's clear that, uh, Mr. Sampson, uh, looks like it's, you know, will steam ahead, the last week, uh, you know, uh, been-
The changes we made seem to be paying off.
Yeah.
That's what you're trying to say.
Thanks, for the second. Yeah, we're gonna have a meeting with the county to, as, as was originally requested last year, to get the county road improvement set up, that's probably not gonna commence until mid to late March, because obviously, you need asphalt plants open.
Sure.
But that's, uh, moving ahead.
Yep, and we got the stone samples, right, Joe, you worked with Don Marie on the, you that?
Yeah.
Yeah, got the stone for the sign, so, that's moving along too, so, all good progress, so, that's, it's good to report that.
Actually, asphalt plants are, uh, probably gonna open in, uh, two weeks, with the weather being more-
There you go.
No, it's gonna be early March?
Yeah, 'cause the weather's, uh, the, the schedule for March is, is favorable for the asphalt plant, so it's, more materials is gonna open up pretty soon.
Really, like, that's where it's at?
Like, beginning of March.
Okay.
First week of March.
That's, that's for early, so, okay.
That's why I heard that. Better for us.
Hey, this, this, the county still might get a little, like, uh, sensitive about paving in, in that early in the year, but we'll deal with that, I mean, that's-
As long as it's the deadline.
Yeah, exactly, we're, it's moving on.
Um, something real interesting happened, I got contacted by a member of, this is interesting, the General William Maxwell, Daughters of the Revolution. They're a nonprofit organization that works on projects to educate, preserve history, and promote patriotism, and they recently restored the grave of General William, I didn't even notice, General William Maxwell and his family at the Greenwich Presbyterian Church.
That's the way they kinda find.
Oh, yeah, I didn't realize that, yeah.
And this May, they put a plaque on, on the Cummins House in the center of Belvedere, so, they're involved in history, so the reason they contacted me was that they were interested, which was, that's good for us, they wanted to put a plaque or a bench, which is exactly what we talked about, a plaque and a bench at Thomas Stewart Park, so, they're willing to donate that, so I got them in contact with the historical commission, so, just something to report on, so, we're gonna be working with Greg on that.
He's a general revolutionary, uh, he's a general revolutionary.
The secretary of George Washington.
Well, Stewart.
Thomas Stewart.
Yeah.
Oh, this, uh, General William Maxwell, no, um, I wish I knew, I gotta go look that up.
He was one of George Washington's, uh-
I gotta go look that up, actually.
Bill Gavin.
Yeah, and I have to Google that. Um, okay, that's it for, uh, Thomas Stewart Park. On the Land Use Board, uh, we did hire a new secretary, so, uh, I want to thank, um, Ray Buckwalter, he put a lot of his personal time in to, um, do the search and do the interviewing, her name is Zazana Karis, she's from Hillsborough, New Jersey, she's a current zoning officer, an inspector in Franklin Township, and she has previous experience serving, uh, board secretary, board secretary in Raritan, so, um, good to report that that's been filled, I guess Kim is gonna be working with her in the transition. We get that moving, um-
When does she start, like?
ASAP.
Oh, like, really? Oh, really? Okay, great.
I mean, I have minutes to do, and, um, yeah, whatever, but, I'm gonna get our, you know, some of the stuff.
Um, I did have a discussion with, with the Land Use Chair, Ray Buckwalter, about the possibility story, but I know, I know, we made it priority to try to be transparent as much as possible, one of the reasons, uh, one of the things we did to do that was to, previous committees took it upon themselves to take the meetings, I thought it would be a good idea to also take the Land Use Board meetings, so I reached out to our, um, webmaster to see if we had enough space and all the technology available, take on that also. Um, she says, yes, we can do it, I reached out to Ray Buckwalter, he's all for it, thinks it's a great idea, I talked to our, uh, town, the Land Use Board Attorney, um, he says there's no objections to it, he thinks, uh, it's a good idea also, so, um, we're planning on at the next meeting to start videotaping the Land Use Board meetings, and to start posting them on the website, so that everybody in the town can see what's going on in the Land Use Board. So, with that said, I'd like to make a motion to allow, uh, the Land Use Board meetings to be, um, videotaped and posted on the township website.
I'll second, any questions, comments, discussions on that? Roll call.
Paul?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Spencer?
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Uh, one quick thing on the budget, I know we talked about, um, the Land Use Board budget, and we had some questions, because we know there's a lot of stuff coming up about affordable housing, um, apparently, we have enough money in the COA, uh, balance of the COA fund to handle it. We're only allowed to use twenty percent, but since our, our fund is, we have about a million, so, we have enough money there to cover all the expenses, so, there doesn't need to be a change to the, to the budget and line item there.
Okay.
Okay, so, uh, I think that's it.
I know.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, Ken, um, we need to authorize Kim to advertise for open space, uh, for land lease, for Green, the Greenbrier property, um, and the motion is to use sealed bids, and, um, we will be opening the bids on the twenty-seventh budget meeting.
Is that inclusive of all the property that we leased out?
No, it's just the Greenbrier, uh, all of the other, uh, contracts have been renewed, they expired on the thirty-first, so.
On the thirty-first of December?
Yes, and they've been renewed, but this one here, there's a conflict, um, that contract expired, okay, the thirty-first of December, and it was brought to our attention that the farmer who was farming it actually doesn't have the lease of it, another party had the lease, and was subcontracting it, and per, set page four, section, uh, twelve, I believe it was in the contract, it's a violation to subcontract, uh, to another party, so, avoid the lease, but the lease had already expired, so, I spoke with John, and because of the fact that the farmer who was presently farming the field isn't the original farmer, uh, that was doing it, when we started the preservation and did the lease, he would have been entitled to have that lease for that, uh, land, like the other farmers that do, uh, if they were the previous farmers of a field prior to us purchasing them, but, uh, he suggested that for this property here, that we go out for sealed bids, and the farmer that's doing it right now, and anyone that sees the ad, whatever it would be in the express times, um, to submit a sealed bid, and then the twenty-seventh full of them up.
Right, and the ones that we've renewed, um, shouldn't we be looking at them prior to, I mean, it's water under the bridge right now?
Same contract that we do every year.
But shouldn't we, shouldn't that be open for other farmers to bid on, though?
No, no, they didn't go out for, no, because they're the, they're the farmers that were farming the field, John says if they were farming the field prior to us purchasing the land, they have the, the lease, they do pay the rent, the, for the lease, for the properties, we have like five leases, we do have that, once the leases have gone out, they're gonna be signed off by the parties, they're gonna be submitted to the town with their check, and the mayor signs off. So we haven't executed the contract, I'd say, but that's all been gone, but the Greenbrier one, uh, we can't legally allow that farmer that was-
Greenbrier's on at the one seventy-three, one seventy-three South Main, right?
Yes, it's that all right there behind, uh, Warren Side, that are, that whole big field, starting there to the left, I believe it's ninety-eight acres, ninety-eight point four.
Come on the corner.
Yeah.
She just questioned Rich, so, that's for shares?
Yeah, a little building is in land law, maybe the exception is to, the party's gonna have a bid, as if, as Kim pointed out, if the owner requires property that is currently, that is currently depending on the opposition being able to re-farm, and as so long as that same person, entity, or incident, continues to farm that property, if you need to go out to bid, you can, you can, except for the required to go to bid, however, once that stops, if you want to go out, then all that's wrong.
Then you go to work to bid, okay?
Didn't John, didn't John memorialize that in the letter? We got the letter, right? I, I requested a letter from John memorializing that advice, so, I'm pretty sure a copy went to Mike as well.
Yeah, and we were, we were, we did some research, because we went back to the farmer to ask, were you the one that was originally farming it when the lease was back? And he said, no, the person that had the lease, her husband was, and he passed away, so she was subcontracting it to another farmer with forty acres.
And can I just ask another question, so, for this piece, the resolution is to put it to bid, and bid opening on the twenty-seventh, is there a minimum requirement of days it has to be open, is that enough time today's, what, the fifteenth? It's a twelve days, is that, is there any?
Yeah.
It is?
Yeah.
It'll be in the three down here.
Oh, is it, but, is that time, Rich, is that time from the time it's published, or the time we authorize it?
Published. So, you give me any, more, yeah, I'll do it.
Anybody else? Roll call.
Can we have a second?
Yeah. We had a second, that's how we got into discussion. We had a motion in a second, 'cause that's how we got the discussion, right? Do you remember who motioned it, right?
I wanna make, I'll do it again.
Okay. Looking for a motion.
I'll make a motion to authorize Kim to advertise for open space and for land lease. Greenbrier property. Using sealed bids, opening on the twenty-seventh.
I'll second that. Any other questions or comments? Roll call.
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Spencer?
Yeah.
Marketa?
Yes. I'm done, thank you.
All right, uh, I have two updates, uh, I'm gonna do these out of order, so first, the rec update, so, and again, procedurally, I'm not sure if we need to do this, but, um, there was a resignation from the Recreation Board, so that was July, and so, I want to make a motion to accept his resignation from the Greenwich Township Recreation Board.
Questions, comments, discussion? Roll call.
Paul?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Spencer?
Yes.
Marketa?
Yes.
Um, and then, at the last, um, recreation meeting, I attended it, and, uh, we were talking about payments, and we're trying to make sure we have the required paperwork on time to Kathleen, and so, I talked to Kathleen, we put together a calendar that we shared with the rec, so there's a calendar for the whole year with dates, and it's in, in here, that, um, the Recreation Board will, will follow, starts getting their PORs together to Kathleen by a specific date, so that they can consistently make the, uh, the bills of this each month, and, uh, and the checks go out, so, that calendar was created and added in, and then there was also a couple additional reports that you're gonna share with, uh, the rec's treasurer, so, that's the outcome of that meeting. As far as the school, I attended the last, uh, school board meeting, and, uh, just one thing I did want to share with everybody in the public as well is, there was a school performance report that was shared at the last meeting, uh, superintendent, um, did a PowerPoint presentation, and I'll try to just sum it up as much as I can, if you wanna go through all the details, I believe the presentation's on a school website, but, um, the school performance report is something that's put out by the Department of Education, it ranks all the public school districts in the state of New Jersey, um, gives them a score, and that score is based on how their performance, that particular school's performance is, compared to what their expectation was, so, every school has a different expectation of their growth and performance, so every school has a different starting point, and they measure the school's performance based on how they achieved that score or exceeded it. So the, the number, the well score really is not as important as how it relates to what your starting point is, so, the good news, and it's really quite impressive, and again, this is based on the last academic year, which ended June thirtieth of seventeen, um, the middle school, um, was in the ninety-sixth percentile of all schools in New Jersey for comparable middle schools, so, they outperformed ninety-six percent of- but it was in the, the top 25% quartile. So it was really a great result because the, the expectation for our schools was higher than say some other schools in the state of New Jersey. And then as far as a, a ranking in Warren County of the top 10 schools, the middle school was number one and the elementary school was number seven. So both of our schools were in the top 10 in the county. So I just wanna say congratulations to the, the school, the administration of the board and.
Good job, man.
You know, and, uh, and really to the students, I mean, it's the students that, it's their scores and, uh, the teachers and the parents who helped make it happen. So I just wanna recognize them for, for their, their performance report. That was it.
That it? You're done?
I'm done.
Okay. Thanks, Brad.
Okay, Mike. Let's see how quick you could be.
We're in good shape. Well, right pace, good pace, okay. Uh, for our report really, we discussed, well, that's the, the big item. Uh, the, the roadway, uh, evaluation and improvement program, um, we, we thought about, uh, maybe doing half the roads that were being impacted by the water main project in an effort to pave and deliver the road. That led to, um, you gentlemen saying, well, where do those roads stand in the scheme of things? If they're not, you know, if they, if they're not deserved of being paved in 2018 or 2019, then maybe we shouldn't pay the kind of money, you know, treat them fairly, not just pay them because the water main project's going. So we did a review of that and, uh, we found out that actually the next, the next roads from strictly a numerical score standpoint, from when we did the improvement assessment back a few years ago, were roads that were slated to be paved, uh, that were the water main was going to be installed and would be disturbed. Uh, they include Arbor Drive, Pearlman Road, Deborah Lane, and Peak West Road. Uh, so now then it gets to the point of, uh, to dollars in sense. And obviously, even though we're getting half the road paved by the water company, well, not by real Pinto, uh, it's still a lot of road and a lot of dollars. Uh, so I've been kinda back and forth with Kathleen and, uh, and I know she said that you're trying, I guess, to put, you know, maybe $250,000 in this year's budget for that purpose. Uh, I mean, that'll get, that'll get some work done. Uh, so the bottom line is this, you know, we're gonna do our paving through the co-op, assuming we have a program in 2018 budget, of course, that, you know, to answer that question. Uh, there, there's, I'm gonna be, uh, plenty of opportunity and plenty of good candidates to, to resurface the road, whether it's the other half or whether it's a, another, uh, another road. Uh, so it, it's really a function of two things. Uh, you guys deciding to budget it or whatever you just decide to budget. You wanna budget 250, great. If, if, you know, you wanna go, if somehow, some way you could bump it up a little bit, we get to pay more roads. I mean, it's, it's pretty damn simple, to be honest with you. So, um, I will just sit tight and, and wait and see to how the budget plays out and of course how the water main project's gonna play out. Because, you know, if, if it gets delayed and those roads aren't, the, the half that's disturbed gets paved, well, and this is a moot conversation and we'll go to another road that's not impacted by a water main project. So tonight, um, a lot of decisions to be made, uh, really boils down to, uh, the, the budget and, and the fact that it has been determined that the next roads from a needing resurfacing standpoint happen to be roads that are being impacted by the water main project. So.
Mike, I got a question for you. Um, with, with them putting the water lines in, are they actually gonna pave behind the water lines or is it something where they plan on paving the roads when the home and power project's done? So in, you know, reference like, could that section actually be paved in next year's budget or?
You mean like 2019?
Right, right.
No, they are, this project, when it starts, and off this, the, the quick segue, next month, we're actually gonna start to see the beginning of the project, which will be tree removal. So no water main, no backhoes, no flat, you know, uh, detours and traffic control yet, but that's gonna be the first step, which is slated to start next month. Okay. Uh, so your question was, good question. Um, no, they will be paving and fixing once they get done with the section. They're gonna have, it's gonna be quite an impressive operation.
So you're just coming behind and you're gonna be doing all this?
Yeah, they're not gonna like finish doing all the water main and then come in and pave all roads. They're gonna finish the road, pave it. Go to the next road, pave it. And they're gonna have six crews set up between Franklin and Greenwich, uh, which include traffic control and include some other things other than six, but there's gonna be two water main installation crews working simultaneously in both towns. So it's gonna be, it's gonna be a lot of activity.
I didn't know if it was something like, maybe we could stretch it out a little bit?
No, that would have actually, I asked them that same question. Uh, because that would have maybe helped us budget this and kind of lay it out, but it does not appear, unless the whole project, something happens and it gets delayed, which, you know, is maybe comical. Until this thing starts, I'm not gonna believe it's gonna start. Uh, because, you know, even though it sure looks like it's gonna start now, at that just point in time, so. So any other questions, even though I kinda just made it flooded too with?
I thought we had to take a chance.
Nothing. Uh, talk, talk about water main already. Just curious, it's in my report, even though I haven't, there's no change. Anything from Bob Pickson with them? I haven't heard from him.
Johnny?
All right. Well, I'm gonna stop picking on for the day I die, because that's what I know. Uh, nothing? Okay. State aid, nowhere, all when the grant awards are gonna be made. Uh, Joe talked about the storage building, which we really are very gonna bother with, and the stormwater permit. Uh, we talked about the, that last, well, last couple months and the change in our, in the requirements instituted by the D P. The first step, just so you know, is, uh, there's a new, it's called an M S P P P, Municipal Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan, that we have to adopt. We've pretty much got the thing drafted up already. Uh, I'll be working with Kim to get it set up to come before, maybe next month, maybe the month after. There's no timeline. It's a formality, it'll be something that, that Joe will, will use. Uh, Joe, we'll get your draft copy in advance, of course. Uh, so that's the first step. Um, everything else is under control. We will have our audit. Have you heard anything else? Like, as far as this year's audit, has anybody called about schedule or something?
No, we kicked it back to the Land Use Board. I think we had to. Just, we took the formality. Land Use Board just sort of stand there right here. So I don't know, does it have to come back? I didn't even ask.
Yeah, it does.
All right. So that's the last reading, all right?
So that's, so nothing, no, nothing much to report, other than that's something.
Mike, real quick, I asked you about, I know you had mentioned it's gonna cost us more money for this new stormwater regulation?
Yes.
You gave me a number, maybe 3,000, you said?
Yes.
Okay. Is that something you have to account for? Okay. That, that was it.
I actually confirm that. Dean, Dean Webber from our office has really been handling this and I actually confirm that number, because I was at a meeting when you texted me the other night. So it's really quick. Uh, but yeah, that's, that should be fine.
Okay. I mean, I'm nearly as bad as I thought. You had mentioned, I thought it was gonna be.
Well, it's, it's one of those things that, you know, you guys really gonna spend money paying us to do this task? I, I'm sure you don't, but it's a necessary evil and it's a requirement. So that's, that's what I'm asking you. So that, that concludes my report for me.
Mike, I have one question for you. I, I know, I believe you guys are working on it and, um, the town attorney was working on it. The, um, the house on Washington Street that we've been trying to.
You have that in the address?
Um, I go by it the other day and the side facing Troy's house, the, the whole, I mean, it's something that we're gonna have to start to expedite because if you stand there and look at it, the whole house now is starting to shift and you just see the windows are, are starting to collapse and it's becoming a real big, big. You can see like the big bow on the side of the property in the house. So it's, it's something that we're really gonna have to start.
It's psychopaths, it's so often I don't notice. It progressively getting worse, but, yeah.
You, you can actually see the whole house is starting to lean, it's leaning into, uh, the other house. So I, I kinda think we should really, really start making this a high priority.
Then, Rich, excuse me.
No, it's worth talking.
Oh, okay. Yeah, that, because the, I.
Right.
The way the process is laid out in our code to kind of move this forward, it's, it's with, with, with Mike. We, we issued reports, what?
Yeah.
Two years ago, maybe. Uh, a year and a half anyway. Um, so I think Mike or, our attorney needs to file some sort of.
Isn't that, that thing that we did, we filed?
I think it is.
And he had to file that and everything and then once whatever happens with that, then we can file a proposal on it and then we can do whatever.
Yeah, it's, it's a real bad trick he has.
Yeah, it might, so with those, it's one way Washington Street. You see, I, I follow that. It's, the next step is with, with you guys, so.
Wait, let me stand with, I know you brought up legislates these properties. Is there a follow-up on that?
I, I think we have a discussion on a.
Exactly.
This would address something like that as well.
I, I just wanted to ask about that.
Kim, the Land Use Board approved, uh, we'll send back 2018-01, the resolution for the setbacks. What we're supposed to do tonight, but you were out there, so just put that on next month, the Jennifer's second and final.
They approved it and the reason why it's not on for tonight is because if I would've advertised that ordinance as introduced and sent it out.
And they didn't approve it?
And if there would've been any changes.
Okay.
Then we would have to re-advertise it.
So we just go for that first?
And that's why it's gonna be on the mark. We've already introduced it. I'm returning adoption scheduled for March.
Okay.
So I'll stay as, as introduced.
Okay. You're done, Mike?
Yes.
Township attorney, have anything in public to discuss?
No.
Okay. Okay, we're gonna go into executive session. Before we do, I see members of the public here. Let's move, I'll make a motion to move public comment up so if anybody wants to go home rather than wait for us, they can go home. So we're looking for a second on the opening public.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Opening up the podium again for anyone who'd like to speak.
For the folks who disagree on something, I also, uh, join in anyone here and, and the council and any other citizen that we can do is that our number one priority should be the safety of our children at all times. We should never experience what's happening in Florida or anywhere else in this country. And I, I think metal detectors, uh, I certainly didn't go to school with them, but I think that was then and this is now. And we are a small town, um, and we know now that these, like, this can happen in any small town, we need to be careful. So I ask that we should always check daily. Do we have, do we have SRO? Do they hold, um?
No, we don't.
No, we didn't, we didn't.
We applied for a grant, hoping to get one, but we didn't get it.
I'm all for that. I think we, when I was growing up, they were called marks. You know, we'd definitely seen you guys before. We walked around in dungarees like we did and we didn't know who they were. Um, and I was from a, you know, nice town, okay?
Twenty-one Jump Street.
So I, I, I'm very serious. You know, I've been before you, for, uh, on this issue and please, uh, children are everything.
You're absolutely right. We can't argue with you with that, Lydia. And, uh, we do, the place does work very close with the schools, so.
I know it does.
He, he's very close with the, with the superintendent and, uh, I know on many occasions they do a lot of things for the schools, so. But we do, it's just top priority. Everybody, most everybody here has kids or grandkids and you're right, nobody wants to lose anybody. Anyone else wishing to speak?
I, I have to come back to that.
Okay.
I'm also, we are in another capacity, you probably know, I would be, um, in respect we ask, uh, you know, to, 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 to expression, it's just, it's, it's, it's.
Why?
Close.
And if you have no objection, I'm happy.
So I'll stick to them before we go in, just make sure, double check, okay? Thanks.
So I, now you have a couple of other people going in. I don't need to be in there with those other people about agenda, if I'm not clear.
Okay, yeah. Okay. I'll talk to Rich in between then, will I?
Hi. Hello. This is Franzen. Daisy Little, 6:30 to South Main Street. You guys are gonna be discussing the shared services agreement in executive session, but will you be taking any action on it when you come out?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? I make a motion to close public comment?
Motion. Second?
All favor?
Aye.
Okay. We're gonna go into executive session. I guess, Rich, we gotta talk first to.
Do you have a motion for the other?
Oh, yeah. Looking for a motion to go into executive session.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Okay. We're gonna go into executive session. I guess, Rich, we gotta talk first to.
Do you have a motion for the other?
Oh, yeah. Looking for a motion to go into executive session.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Okay. Motion to come out of executive session?
Anyone?
Hold on.
Come back, you're going.
No, he left.
I didn't even see it. I hear a lot of chatter out there.
Okay. I'll make a motion, we come out of executive session?
I'll second.
All favor?
Aye.
Rich, you wanna give a brief synopsis of what we did?
Absolutely. We were in executive session for I don't know how long, I don't know an hour. During this time, we discussed matters related to litigation about the pending tax appeal, failed litigation, discussed litigation regarding workers' comp. We also discussed policy changes regarding, uh, hours of municipal building operations in relation to the police sector, question for a council clerk to discuss pending ordinance regarding, and property, we did this issue, um, and the basic property registration ordinance. We also discussed one matter related to paying, uh, vacation time for, for, we were getting tired of, you know, with the 40e as well as the structure matters applying to the township and the school district. In addition to that, we discussed personnel matters related to, uh, personnel, staff drivers and a, a, a hire of a, for, 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 We discussed pending ordinance regarding property, we did this issue, we'll take your property registration ordinance. We also discussed one matter related to vacation time for retired, retired, you know, with us for E, as well as structure matters applying to the township and the school district. In addition to that, we discussed personnel matters related to truck drivers and a potential hire of a D W, for personal corrections. The session was also discussed, sorry, that was my part, not related to, I think my good one, status update regarding personnel.
I'd like to make a motion that the township pay a barrier related to a D P W worker his 17 vacation days he had accrued prior to retirement.
And just, also to pay him that his daily wager.
His daily wager.
I'll second it.
Any comments, questions, or discussions? Roll call.
Ron.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes.
Spencer.
Yeah.
Marquette is, and Washington.
Yes. Brad, you have a motion to make regarding the school board agreement?
Yes, make a motion for, to authorize, we need to discuss the shared service agreement with the superintendent of school board and potential changes to it.
Okay, I'll second that motion. Any questions, comments, or discussions? Roll call.
Ron.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes.
Spencer.
Yes. I make a motion that we authorize the CFO that makes a check payable for $8,500 to settle the litigation as discussed with the labor attorney in executive session. Hang on one second.
One second.
Questions, comments, or discussions? Roll call.
Ron.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes.
Marquette. Franzen and Washington.
Yes, Will, you have a one for the park.
And like to make a motion to have Mike Finelli put together lawn mowing maintenance specs for Towne Stewart Park in regards to the weekly lawn maintenance and also separate little line item in there for lawn maintenance and re-wacking services to be done ASAP, starting soon.
I'll second that. Any questions, comments, or discussion? Roll call.
Ron.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes.
Spencer.
Yes. Anybody else have any other business to bring up?
Actually, yeah, something that we talked about earlier, a couple of us, I think it's pre-meeting, but we have a very large ordinance that needs to be printed in the newspaper, and Kim's under the impression that the whole thing needs to be, Ed Kathleen was under the impression that the whole thing needs to be printed, but John Drew last night said that it could be done by title?
And summary.
And summary.
And need summary.
Then, so, but John has to write the summary, then, right?
John or-
Or somebody.
Yeah.
Okay.
Is that something like we can do where if the ordinance has to go in the paper for, you know, cost or whatever, you know, if you say ordinance 2017-1, buy it on the table, you know, if you wish to see a copy of the ordinance, stop down and Mr. Burns puts it on the board rather than putting it-
And/or to the website. And with that being said, do we actually need a professional to write that? Can't we write our own summary? It's a setback ordinance, which has-
Yeah, I would have a professional write for something.
Okay.
You want to hear one here?
That's not motion, I don't-
No, no.
We're done.
You good? Looking for a motion to insurance.
Motion.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Little, you weren't anything, did you? Just observing? Are we more exciting than the Olympics?
I'll turn you off. I watch TV, maybe on Saturday or Sunday.
That's it? Joe? Yeah. I'm not being almost like, how have you been? I haven't seen you in a hell of a while.
Oh, yeah.